Alright, so please, since you know, people turn around. You know, since we can't do it, and we don't do things the way we have normally done it, but I'm trying to get back to more in-person meetings. But we still have people on the board who want a virtual option. So, this time tonight, what I'm gonna do is have George Wilborn, who's on my staff. Are you ready for this?
I'm ready.
He is taking the meeting. And the meeting will be uploaded to YouTube and to this website, Third World Website. So, people will have access to it. If there are people asking, well, we sent it to the meeting, is your registration in the website or through YouTube? The first thing I want to do is thank Pastor Ernest Lethner from Mount Pista Church. Well, along with us, they utilize it as a community space. Reverend Lethner is a young pastor who's taken over this church and has grown it. And this is a very active church. He has been the first lady of very active in spreading their ministry outside of the walls of the church. Now, I want to thank him for allowing us to use this space to him. We have about five things on the agenda, and then we're gonna open it up with questions. So, just a general question. But I would like to start with our Cook County Assessor, Fritz Cady. I know many of you have gotten your tax bills. I got mine last week. Spicet shop, in some ways. But I wanted to have him come and talk to you about your property tax bill. And would you come forward? Fritz Cady.
Thank you all for being down here. And thank you Reverend Lethner, the congregation here for welcoming us on a beautiful summer evening, a summer day here in historic Brownsville. Takes me back to the smell. Because I grew up in 53rd and Greenwood. I'm a resident of the Academy. And I'm proud to say that I was born in Michael Green Hospital. So, I'm literally born in Brownsville, so I happen to be here with all of you. I know we've got lots to cover tonight, so I'm gonna get right to it, and then we'll have some time for questions, okay? Tonight, I'm gonna tell you about two things. Exemptions. Appeals you discounts off of your property tax bill. The one that I mentioned that was sent to you by the treasurer, this due on August 1st. These are all likely options from your bills. New corrective bills issued if you don't have your exemptions. So, we'll talk about that. Second thing we'll talk about is appeals for assessments. That may affect your tax bills the next year. But I believe this is a year where Chicago's being reassessed. They'll get a reassessment notice at the end of the month, which will be reassessing what we call Hyde Park Township, which is all the bricks on the south side, south pushing East and State Street, which includes a lot of the borders here. So, we'll be talking about both of them, and we'll have some time for questions, okay? So, first of all, I have my clarity here. Let me just tell you quickly how the assessor's office is into our budget of property taxes. So, our job is, a lot of people think the assessor's office that we're determining his taxes. Not exactly true. We're part of it. We're estimating the value of every property into a unit. So, we're an agency that is about 250 people. We're trying to estimate the value of 1.9 million properties in Cook County. And every three years, we come from Chicago, and we estimate the value of all the different properties, the single-family homes and the commercial properties downtown. And this is so that we can divvy up the cost of government, of our schools, of our police. And these, those taxes are not set by us, they're set by the school district, by the city of Chicago, when they're coming. And so, estimating the value of all the properties is a way of figuring out dividing up the cost of government. We want to make sure your assessment is right, but you want the assessor's to make sure that, making sure that everyone else's property is valued correctly too, without any bias or favoritism. We also apply exemptions. Exemptions are a measure of progressivity and basically regressive system of taxation. Property taxes are progressive. Note out, a lot of people think I like property taxes, I don't. But it's the system that we have, providing our city and our schools, exemptions give you a chance to take some of the amount that's due off of your bill. Like, if you have to apply for it, one third of all owners don't have the homeowners exemption. They just need to apply for it. If you look to your right or if you left, one of the three people, the property doesn't have a homeowners exemption, that's what we can help with tonight. So, our exemptions, again, it's a deduction to your property tax bill. The homeowners exemption in Chicago is worth a little bit less than $1,000 a year. So, that's a lot of savings for you. Plus, if you haven't had your exemption, you can quadruple your pleasure by getting something called a certificate of error, which gives you a chance to get credit for all the exemptions you should have had the last three years, and get a little refund to you to the amount of property taxes you overpaid. There's several different kinds of exemptions. The main one is the homeowners exemption. That's for everyone from the main residence. And it's regardless of your income. If it's your main residence, you should have a homeowners exemption. If you're a senior, you can also qualify for the senior exemption if you're over age 65. That's also regardless of income. And seniors need to apply for it. It used to be seniors had to reapply for it every year. My mom said, "You know, Fritz, now that I saw this assessor, I want you to take care of something." And I'm pretty young, why do I have to reapply for the senior exemption every year? So, we got that automatically reviewed on the trial period after 2019. And this year, it automatically reviewed and terminated. So, but we still have to sign up when you are a senior in your life over 65. So, that's the second most important exemption. There's also something called the senior freeze. If your income is under $65,000 a year, the people living in your household, and you're over 65, you're eligible for the freeze, which freezes your assessment in place. And it's an extremely valuable exemption, and it's leading where housing prices are on the rise. It's the most important tool that we have for seniors of mixed incomes, make this in place, and not feel like the price that they live. Okay? We want to make sure that everyone is eligible for a senior freeze to apply for, including loved ones in your life. We'll show you, we can do research to see if someone has their exemptions or not. There's also an exemption for people with disabilities. If you qualify through the Secretary of State's office, we have other documentation demonstrating that you have a disability, that exemption is also quite sizable, and you're eligible by far. You have to somehow have some documentation demonstrating it. There's also exemption for disabled veterans. You have disability status with the VA. It can almost eliminate your property tax bill completely if your disability level is 70% or above. We have the committee of the government's in here. If you have disabilities attached, let's make sure we're checking that, if you qualify for the exemption. Okay? We're gonna run away from this, just to make sure we have enough time. How can you check to see if you have the exemption, exemptions that you're entitled to? There are two different ways to do it. You can look on the bill. It just proceeds, this is the yellow one, that was sent to you by the treasurer. Let's look at how you would do that. By the way, this is also certificates of error here again. So, if you don't have your exemption, you can quadruple your pleasure by having certificates of error for the years you didn't have. So, how can you see if you have exemptions applied when you're done? Look in the lower left-hand corner of your bill, and in the area where you see in the red box thing, the tax calculator, it's there with zero, by the homeowners exemption. That means you don't have a homeowners exemption in place. And that means that we can get you a bill that's a big issue, that includes the exemption, and we can make you make sure that you're applying for certificates of error, and get property taxes that you overpaid if you've done it to me. Okay, so that's the first way to check. Also, if you look on the senior status exemption. If you're over 65, you qualify for that, make sure that you have. If you don't, that's okay. You can do the ability to magnify, so get your bill issued as it compares, they'll have that senior's exemption, and you can ditch your certificates of error for the years that you didn't have. There are a lot of people who just want to make sure they have. Okay? So, that's one way to check. Another way to check is just to go to the website, cookcountyproperityinfo.com. And then what you can do is go and search your address, or if you have a property tax bill, put your personal identification number in, and then you can check by clicking on the exemptions section, and see if exemptions were applied both this year and the last three years. That's also how you can check to see if you have certificates of error, if you find it 's due, if your exemptions were applied. Okay? I also want to talk about appeals. We'll be sending, so as I mentioned, it's a reassessment year. This is a year where we estimate the value of your home as of January 1st. And you want to make sure that we're getting it right. You're the world's greatest expert on the value of your home, not us. We know what we know, but there's lots of things that we don't know. Especially in this community, where we have the story columns that might not have been renovated for a long period of time. The qualitative differences between the new structures you see being built here on the boulevard versus the home at its price. Here's some information about what's going on that you didn't already know, and that's why my home is worth less. And that's the kind of information that's most valuable in an appeal. So, let's talk about it more. Look in your mailbox for reassessment notice, will be coming by the end of the month, 9 July. You'll have 30 business days to make an appeal if it looks like you overestimated the value of your house. So, how do you do an appeal? Filing is always free with our office, it does not cost anything to make an appeal. It takes just a couple minutes to file an appeal. There's sort of a folklore out there that you probably get inundated with mail in your mailbox, and families trying to get you to appeal your taxes, and folks who know a lot less about their home than you do, they want you to give up some of your savings by hiring them. When people appeal, people who appealed on their own, were actually slightly more successful than our office staff here, than people who hired a lawyer or consultant. Because you're the world's greatest expert on their own house, and we just go by the data. So, we'll try to get someone else involved. But you have a right to hire someone too, to do an appeal. I wanted to mention that you can start filing when your township is open. So, as soon as we send out assessment notices, you can go online to file an appeal. Again, you can check our website, cookcountyassessor.com, to see what assessments have been sent out, and to get information about your house. You can save the appeal file while you're working on it, you just have to have an email address to start an appeal. And you can add attachments, you can add pictures, you can add phasals, you can add all sorts of other supporting documentation to make your case. And what I wanted to note was that appeal results will take a couple months to be sent back to you, because our analysts have to look at your information, but we will send a notification on the result of your appeal. So, let's just walk through the process a little bit. First of all, you'll receive a reassessment notice, and you want to look at what we estimate your home to be worth. And you probably have some reasonable idea of what we think your houses were. If we overestimated its value, that could be a really good basis for an appeal. You can also look at homes that you know to be like yours, and compare the values that we assessed for that versus your own. That's another important thing, look for to make sure that this process is fair. We look at the evidence when we're sending an appeal. Again, the most important thing that you can show us is something that we know already know. A lot of people spend time doing research on comparable, trying to look through houses like theirs. Again, they do that, but you don't have to do that. We don't watch it, that's a barrier to file an appeal. The most important area of the appeal is the narrative, where you tell us the story of your house, why did my people low average below what we estimated it to be worth? So, you can go to our website and see the exact date when we sent out the assessment notice, and look for Hyde Park Township. And from there, I'm supposed to be able to see the, cookcountyassessor.com, in the appeals section under that guy there. One of the reasons why you might file an appeal. One of the reasons, that you can form a, that makes a home like yours, successful revenue. You have a right under the Illinois Constitution to be assessed the same way as a home like yours. So, that's the first reason you can mention an appeal. Second reason, it's overvaluation. What is overvaluation? Overvaluation is there is no way that I can sell my house for the price that you estimated it to be worth. Okay, that's overvaluation. And you can show us information to back it up, and say, "I've been trying to sell my house for 10% less than you estimated it to be worth, and no one has bought it, and I've had it on the market for six months." That's one good reason, okay? You can also look at information like that for homes like yours, to also substantiate your values. The third thing you might want to look for is, we got your house wrong. You said it's made out of stone. You think it's one of the few green stones here on K D Groton, in Rexel. But they're very nice. So, correct the physical description, incorrect physical description is also a basis for an appeal. If you want to make sure that we got those basic facts about your house right. One of the things that affects your tax bill, one of the things that's confusing about assessments is that a change in your assessment doesn't necessarily entail the same change in your tax bill. Why is that? Because we all share the tax base of all other homes and buildings in Chicago. And Chicago's tax rate is not fixed. The more the base, the property tax base grows, the lower rates go. And we're in a time right now where house values are on the rise throughout the city of Chicago. It's not just Brownsville, it's all over the city. We do have office properties that are down on the decline, but from the data that we see, we're seeing more growth in value in homes and some commercial properties, offsetting the weakness of office downtown, we expect a base to decline. Generally, the thing to look out for is, how are other people's assessments changing compared to yours? If your assessment's up 20%, and everyone else's assessment is up 20%, your tax bill ain't gonna change much at all. You don't believe me? You can look at the reassessment last time in 2021. There were more than 100,000 chiites whose assessments rose, but their tax bills fell. And that includes a lot of white paper in the south of Fairfield, where assessments went up, but their assessment didn't go up as much as the rest of the city of Chicago, and so their bills declined. I know that's another case in Brownsville. In Brownsville, the bills were up, because of the marriage law. But generally, bills weren't up as much as assessments were. So, that's an important thing to remember. You want to make sure you get your exemptions regardless of your assessment. This is the automatic deduction from your bill. So, we can, you can check our website, not only for your own home, but for your loved ones. If you have a Christmas chart list, or a romantic list, or a wedding list, go and check their people's exemptions too. We're probably a lot of those in your life who don't have their exemptions. And you can tell them, "Hey, I saw you don't have your homeowners exemption. Want to save $1,000?" Then they can take you out to dinner and gossip with you. So, that's an important thing to do. There are other things that change the tax rate in Chicago. The taxes that our schools and the city and the county charge. So, the change in your assessment doesn't necessarily entail the same change in your taxes. So, when that assessment notice comes, again, the most important thing for you to look at is the number, the circle there on the left. What's it be estimated your home will be worth? That's what you want to check, to make sure that you're not overvaluing your home. Okay, so, we'll look. We're here to help. Here's a key barcode, where you can get all the relevant information that will help you look at the tax calendar, find appeals, check your exemptions, apply for exemptions. You can do all the best for us, okay? You can also call us at the number you have here, you can reach out on social media, you're welcome to come downtown to our office. Generally, it's better to visit in the afternoon rather than the morning. Lines are longer right now because people are coming in, but if you come in the afternoon, lines tend to be shorter. And you can sign up to receive updates via email. Okay, we covered a lot there. Do we have any questions? You guys have been very patient here.
The long-term, how long do you have that on the future?
Okay, the question was about the long-term homeowners exemption. I skipped over it because this exemption feels disappointing. Because it's got a fancy name that was put on it by our general assembly, but it's not as great as ever. I suppose it's also possible to qualify for. So, you asked how you qualify for the long-term homeowners exemption? If your income's under $100,000, if you've lived in your home for more than 10 years. So, that's one bad. The third card is the kicker. You have to admit amongst the people who receive the greatest increase in assessments of all the people in Cook County. About 1% of people qualify for that club, and generally, it's not a happy club. We notify you automatically if you qualify for it, and we can make sure that it's applied for you. But I don't talk about it much because it's really hard to qualify. We notify you automatically if you qualify. Okay?
I live in one of the smallest communities in Cook County of Chicago, the old park, and it's a mixed make company. The CHA took this into consideration, home may be like you. The tax amounts we were paying are totally off the menu. We can have investors coming in from another country that is paying more taxes, and we own the property. Our house is ours. And I'm obviously prepared for what's in the county treasurer's office, and I made this for such a long time, with my property not being assessed in writing. Just yesterday, my daily tax burden is zero. I understand there might be some other circumstances that I have. There's been a big mix-up with this property over the last eight, two years. And I was here all of a sudden, I saw you personally, and you were very kind and you said that you'd sit here.
Okay. All right, so the question was, we have the former park, the former park, we've had a great variety of homes here, some of which are being bought by investors. I know the tax bills in my community are all over the place. Did I get that right? Can you tell me what's going on and what I can do? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
The homeowners, yes, not the assessment, they can't, what you call that, they measure your...
The survey.
Yes, I think they're totally off.
Okay, and she thinks that one of the reasons why the property tax bills might be all over the place is they're used to being owned by the CHA, and when they're surveying, they might have inaccurate information. So, we'll look at it. We can look at your property, we can look at properties around here. We try to do our best with the information that we have about the properties. And that gets more complicated when markets are moving around. So, you mentioned outside investors coming in, you mentioned others coming in, inspecting it. We make our assessments based on sales, lots of sales that happen in your community based on what we know. But anytime we have incorrect information about a home, we can be wrong. I try to make sure that our staff walks calmly, because we're just a couple hundred people trying to estimate the value of almost 2 million properties, where each one of those property owners knows way more about their house than we do. So, make sure that we have the correct information about your house. You can go to our website, search your address, and it'll show you what we think we know. Let's make sure we get that accurate. Bills can be zero. You mentioned that some people have zero tax bills in your neighborhood. That can happen if we value the house above, and then have a homeowners exemption. And that the exemption can be worth more than assessed value sometimes. Especially the former park, where it was very much hurt by the housing market after the housing crisis in 2008, 2009. Values are on the rise now, but we might not have seen enough evidence when we reassessed it last time. When we send out the reassessment notice this year, make sure that we're estimating the value of your house right. If you think we're getting the values wrong, we can go to our website and afford it too. Okay?
And you'd like to take maybe a couple of other questions and move on to the next question. Can you talk about how to be, on this assessment, on your own?
Uh-huh.
We can lay a whole different angle, senior is again, and senior is...
Yes, so the question was, so, Mr. Cady, can you help me with this? Can you actually have multiple exemptions at the same time? Can you have a homeowners exemption, and a senior exemption, and a senior freeze? The answer is yes, absolutely. More than 100,000 homeowners do. So, let's make sure that our seniors here are all signing up for it, have seniors in your life. Let's make sure at the very least you have your homeowners and your seniors exemption, because that's for everyone from the main residence regardless of their income. The senior freeze, your income has to be under $65,000 to qualify for it. But it is, that's the most powerful exemption you can get in circumstances when prices are rising. If you think you qualify, or you know someone qualifies, we want to know now, so they're not overpaying your taxes, okay? And on the website, I'll explain which extensions you can have at the same time, okay?
Or senior freeze, the homeowners, so they have to apply every year?
The question was, the homeowners exemption, you have to apply every year? The answer is no. It should be automatically every year, but you should always check. The senior freeze, you do have to reapply every year, because people's incomes tend to change every year, and that's the state law, you have to follow the state law.
Yes, so, I'm assisting my grandmother with her senior freeze application, and if her required documents are expired, can she still submit those documents with her application?
So, the question was, if her supporting documents, if the identification, your senior freeze application expired, can you still submit them? I will submit them now, and if our team tells you that you don't have sufficient supporting evidence because of expiration, we'll get back to you, and then you can submit more. We want to make sure whatever information she has when she's applying, we have it now. Okay, and then we can flag it here. We have Jose Agarola on my staff, and James Mendez on my staff. Both, you can raise your hands, and he comes with them, and we can flag the application and make sure that everything we need, and if we see we don't have everything we need, we'll get it back to you, okay?
One more question, can I get that contact number again?
There we go. So, here's the contact information, 312-443-7550, if you were to call. And you can also use the key barcode, it'll take you right to a group of links where you can see how applied the exemption is. It'll take you right to a group of links where you can see how applied for exemption and the documents will be, okay?
Take this last one. My question is, I heard you mentioned the website. Is your website set up now to monitor progress and see the progression of that?
So, the question was, I heard you mention the website. Can I get updates on progress on the website for my applications? Yes, so our website is bookcanonuser.com. When you file an appeal, you can check on the status of your appeal application. Also, when you file for exemptions, you can also check on the status of your exemption application. It's typically going to take a couple of weeks to do it, but if you're missing exemptions now, we can help you with that. We'd like to give you issue the new bill that includes the exemptions if you have an exemption application now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for coming now.
You all are here for, with us, who are many of you got to get back on the road to Springfield. Here for, okay. The next thing on the agenda is 2019. I had a deal with the Emanuel administration to bring a Pete's Grocery Market to 39th State. And that was in 2019. Unfortunately, that project got caught up in the life of administrations. And was not able to be successful under that administration to get the steel gun. It has taken a lot of political capital and will and kicking my feet and complaining and being pissed off about not being able to bring that grocery store to the community. I'm hopeful in the Johnson administration. I began to have some conversations with the mayor's office, with the various departments, with the Chicago Housing Authority, where the land is located, with CPS, where the old school, the old fairing school was, to look at that site still for Pete's Grocery Store. And what I wanted to do, because there's been some news stories about Pete's, was to give you accurate information about what the status of that project is. We've gone through the pandemic, construction crisis, not have done that. But we're still plugging forward, moving forward, trying to address the full desecration that we have here. And given the news that we heard this morning about Jules and Marion House, and now the businesses have now consolidated and companies taking over grocery stores, this grocery store is even more important to us in this community. And so, I've asked Kenyon Merritt, who is the mayor's deputy for development, economic development of the city of Chicago, and Seth Becklarnie, who is the developer, working to bring this grocery store and other businesses here, to give an update.
Thank you so much, Sharon Adal. And she is not exaggerating about how much she has been an advocate for ensuring that that parcel of land is developed, or most importantly, that it's developed in a way that we can use to provide a grocery store. And so, as Sharon had mentioned, the Johnson administration and our team is committed to making sure that that happens. And so, we've called all parties at the table that have parts that are related to that land and in Chicago local schools, the Chicago housing authority, the city itself, as well as some credentials, to figure out how we need to work. And I think we've come up with several paths. And I'm feeling quite optimistic about it. And so, we're putting together a plan and a strategy around what does a full development plan look like for that space? Which again, is inclusive of the stores, but like what are the other amenities that are needed by the community? And so, we've been working with Zed and others to make sure that that happens. And so, again, the mayor is committed to ensuring that communities that lack access to food, grocery stores, that we, that we are pushing that forward. Having a full retail strategy, we're willing to work with the state, they just released a no-fo which allows for municipalities as well as other entities to receive grant dollars to support those efforts. As you guys know, Sharon Adal, it's very instrumental in making sure that we have nothing. We were developing, which recently passed a 1.25 billion dollar grant deal. And so, that gives us the resources and the revenue we need to do that we need and so. But Seth, does you have anything to share?
Thank you, Alden, and thank you, Deputy Mayor. I want to underscore what both have said and really point myself out as a city aide of some of the things that Mayor Johnson and his team have discussed at our foretiers of Chicago, including cutting tape. If you're a business person or a local business people in the city, you're going to have to pass to actually execute business. So, this administration has installed us to the business community and helping bring businesses to our communities that have been historically disinvested. And so, the Alden, actually, this is a public forum, so she put it, this is a very polite in her description about what we've endured, but we are full steam ahead and working with the administration to finally bring forth this project, which is significant and revolting.
Anybody have questions or links, please? So, we are on a path to have these discussions. We've had a meeting 10 days ago. We're going to have another upcoming meeting to move forward. So, I want to give you now that I've seen that there's some momentum, I'm planning to come back and give you a better update, a more timely update in real time. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Now, I can unequivocally say that all the departments are working together now to come up with the best plan for this for the Washington community in that exception system. So, nothing has been determined yet. For the first time, everyone is working together.
Yes, ma'am.
So, just want to show our experience. So, everything that the CHA has seen, uh, so, you got?
Yes.
So, we can't get a beat anymore, or is it that?
We have to figure out exactly what goes in that location in addition to a grocery store. There are departments like the Chicago Housing Authority, you know, we have housing departments. There's CPS, which has split, it's no longer there, it was demolished. Everyone has a point of view. And so, we have to now go back and recreate the wheel and have those discussions that we had finalized in 2019. If they go anywhere, we have to go back. And so, for the last four years before Mayor Johnson was elected, there wasn't any discussion. Seth can tell you, he just couldn't get the ball. We're having problems now. So, hopeful under Johnson administration, under the leadership of, you know, White King, who knows our community. And Zed, who is still committed to this project, he couldn't walk away. He has spent a lot of money trying to bring this to our community. We want to make sure that we keep moving forward and positive. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Mary Serrano, from South Park, where there is a song here. What is it? Did you all get any lessons from the English Old Foods, the Ice House? And what happened to them? Thinking about the process coming in, and maybe you mean relatively high cost?
Yeah, so, you guys, as you were asking, right, in terms of food detail, how this administration is going to approach it? There are a lot of lessons learned, right? So, there's the merger of the two major bulk services that's happening now. There's Don's, there's Old Foods. So, we're looking at a lot of different models. One is something that's in the grocery store. One is grocery stores have been committed to the city despite the areas that other people may not want to use since it happened. So, there is locally owned businesses. So, we're exploring again all models. But to your point, there are a lot of different work of developments and other neighborhoods that we're having.
Thank you, Kenyon. Yes, sir.
Hi, Peter Serrano. Is there a target date that you have set? You have the twenty, the American work, not this, that, or? But you have a date in your position, the location of the...
As fast as we can go. Development is very, you know, people that are involved in development, it's very difficult. Development moves deliberately, but the thing that gives me optimism, gives me, that makes me optimistic is that everyone is at the table. Everyone is committed to trying to solve for 39th State. We have the meetings now. I lived in four years of cajoling and going and talking to the mayor, going and talking to the Department of Planning and Commission, and not seeing any movement. I am seeing movement now, and to me, that's most important. That shows me the level of commitment that the administration is demonstrating. Yes, sir.
One question. Was the capital base important? Was the required capital? Do we need private capital to make this happen? And so, where's that right?
We always need private capital. And unfortunately, there's a thing called banks. And they want to get their money paid back, the interest that we borrow from to develop businesses and grocery stores and all other types of retail and any stores in the community. So, capital comes from dollars. And investors are partners, as well as the city, I believe, is committed to this project and will help in any way they can to also fulfill this obligation.
I just want to add that thanks to our state representative, Lamont Robinson. The city did give an earmark of a million dollars to go towards this project that's still sitting in the city's progress. And I would plead with my state rep and my state senator back there that if there are any more state dollars running around, we definitely could use it in this community. Okay, well, Kenyon, thank you so much. I appreciate it. I know you've had like a long day. And Seth, thank you so much for staying the course. You know, staying the course. Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, we're going to stay on 39th Street for a minute. This video, you know, on the southeast corner, it is a vacant decent property. For many years, it was vacant. We had a couple of restaurants there. They went out of business. And since I've been on that site, it's been primarily underutilized. But we have a proposal before us that I wanted to introduce, and that's Wells Fargo Bank is interested in bringing a facility to the Bronzeville community. And I would ask Liz Butler to come forward and introduce the Wells Fargo team and give you a presentation.
Thank you, Adal. We'll just get situated.
And if I can have Robert and Colin from QC DC also come forward.
Good evening, my name is Liz Butler. I'm a land use attorney, welcome and tapped to loss in Chicago, and I represent Wells Fargo. Thank you to open down for, if I can insert tonight to talk to you about this proposal. So, I'm joined by a number of others with the Wells Fargo team. We'll choose shortly, but we're here tonight to share the details of the development proposal for this property that's shown on the screen here. And I'll progress through the slides to give an overview. It's 3901 South King Drive. And Wells Fargo is actually in the process of an expansion into the Chicago market. They just opened their first branch in the city in January. And the Bronzeville location, we won a number of branches that are coming to the city. So, that'll expand access for Wells Fargo customers. Previously, they may have had to go to Evanston to do the native person banking. So, we'll share with you a little bit about the site, its existing conditions. Alton mentioned that this has been long vacant. There are some environmental conditions that will be, we believe, relegated as a part of this project. We'll talk about some of the sustainable development strategies incorporated into the design. Talk a little bit about the most main branch operations and the services that we offer to members of the community, as well as the investment that Wells Fargo was making in Brownsville and Chicago during their full profit efforts. So, let me quickly introduce our speakers and then we'll start the presentation. I'm joined tonight by Catherine Catford, who is the senior project architect at Horst Gates. They are the project architect for this project and for the other Wells Fargo branches in the city. Robert Lay is with us tonight. He's the Chicago district manager for Wells Fargo, and he'll talk about the main operations. Trina Shepherd is Wells Fargo's head of the management and community impact. For Illinois, it was content. She'll talk about community benefits and investment in Brownsville. And then we also have Chad Gates, who is the lead construction manager of the Wells Fargo. He's running the construction for the entire branch expansion initiative. Another Wells Fargo team members are in the audience tonight as well. So, thank you for joining us. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Catherine. And of course, we'll save the time at the end of the presentation for any questions that you all might have.
Catherine? Yeah. Hi, I'm Jen. So, as we've already discussed, it's at the southeast corner, it's perche and North King Drive. It's actually, the site is right across from the Orianna's. The site is, so, it's going to be shopping districts. And one of the things that's notable is that both streets are actually considered pedestrian streets, so are required to have certain entrance, have entrances on both streets. And we also need to have minimum blazing for design standards and the rest of that. Kind of just making sure that it's welcoming for passersby. This is the proposed site plan. And you can see that we have, is we finding this?
I don't know.
Um, there we go. We have the entrance. It's a corner vestibule entrance where we have, you know, the entrances on both of the major streets. We also have the vehicular access to... We also have the vehicular access to the site from both streets into the parking lot. On the south side of the building, there are handicaps halls. There are two ATMs, walk-in ATMs, and also one night deposit drop box that will be available 24 hours a day. And then next to that, there are also bike racks, computers, landscaping. We have trees that are going to be planted along our, our key to comply with the parkway and the street skate requirements. And also on this portion, we don't have the trees because the sidewalk's too thin in elevation. But we do have shrubs and things like that to soften up the elevation. Nice. There are the trees that are screening parking lot and screening the alleyway that's next to it. And that's, there's a small house right there. But it will have the, it's, will have the same materials as the building. So, you know, everything will be nice. The next three slides really just show you the building's total look like. So I'll go fairly quick with it. You can see the ATMs in the back facing the parking lot. This is the corner entrance. It's got two doors. And the side that's facing the alleyway. And this line, I just wanted to show that, you know, Wells Fargo didn't want there to be the rear elevation. Every elevation was treated like main elevation. So but there's not a back elevation that's untracked for the community. And we're also making sure that even the rooftop, we can't clean it or spread. So you can't see the front. This is the door frame. You know, when we come in from that corner vestibule, there's an ATM inside. And then you also have access to two teller stations. You can meet with a branch representative, have conversations in the collaboration lounge, or even privately with somebody at the device offices or in the consults. And one other thing that I wanted to mention about this is the environmental initiatives that Wells Fargo has. We don't necessarily submit for the certification, but we do make sure that the buildings could actually obtain the certification. So, you know, we, as you can see there, you know, this window is for materials and equipment that they choose. Make sure they're good, good stores in the environment. And last but not least, you know, what's the timeline of the project? Estimated construction to start in the first quarter 2025. And then estimated open will be third quarter 2025. And I will hand you over to Robert as we talk about branch operations.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Lay, executive director and district manager for the Metro of Greater Chicago. I will be the boots on the ground and overseeing the day-to-day branch operations of Chicago. First, I want to thank Auburn Pat Dow for your help and support to bring a Wells Fargo branch to this community. This is a special moment for me because I grew up in this neighborhood and now I have the opportunity to serve this greater community. Just to give you a little background on this expansion. Our goal is to be the best bank for everyone. Branches continue to play an important role in the way we serve our customers in combination with our digital ATM challenges. As the customer preferences change and patterns change, so do our branches. For example, we are renovating our entire fleet of branches over the next few years to really deliver on our goal of being the best bank for everyone. Some areas are, like Chicago, will see more branches. While in other areas, we will be investing and moving branches to locations to provide us more convenience. Staffing and operation hours. The bank will be staffed by 18 full-time employees. And the hours of operation will be from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturdays. The bank will be closed on Sundays. The services that will be provided in the community will include checking and savings, CDs, credit cards, home loans, personal loans, business loans, auto loans, investing, permanent banking services, and educational tools and resources. For more specific information, please, you know, go to wellsfargo.com and check out what I was going to say to learn more. Lastly, something that's super, super important to the community and what I'm even more passionate about is the Open Side Centers. Our proposed Bronzeville branch will offer Open Side as part of the Bank of the Future Initiative launched in 2021. Open Side will provide access to affordable bank stream accounts and financial education. Neighborhoods, Wells Fargo actually teamed up with Operation Hope to launch Open Side Centers within a diverse, low to moderate income neighborhoods to provide free financial education, workshops, and one-on-one coaching. Our Bronsville branch will be able to offer free financial advice to anyone and you don't need to be a one-star customer. There are no other Open Side branches in Bronsville than only five in Chicago altogether. Our branch will be able to support the current small businesses in Bronsville and help grow the number of small businesses. And our branch will be able to help grow the number of homeowners in this community as well. And with that said, I'd like to turn it to Trina to take it from there.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you. Again, my name is Trina Shepherd. And I lead our collective in community impact for Wells Fargo Illinois as a sponsor. And I'd like to say I've had one of the best jobs at the bank because I basically come over and help communities step up. It's totally positive. And I've lived in this community for a very long time. I live six, five minutes drive from here. So I'm excited, happy, because I've been originally driving by too. And this is my coworker's there. I've been living in the bank for 10 years. Again, all that time living in this community. So I'm so happy that I'm coming here. And we all work together to make sure we're serving the community, not just from a brand perspective, but making sure we are certification-type materials and things like the brand. But when they tell me, you come to Bronsville, it's my neighborhood, the brand. I go, let me get to work, right? So what we like to do is go to our listeners and then ourselves in the community, not just have customers come to us, but how else can we help the community? And we've been serving Chicago from another perspective for several years. Since 2018, we invested $40 million in Chicago's area alone. That's in the area of housing access and affordability. In 2018, we had the Neighborhood Lift Program. And that was $82 million into Chicago, helping new homeowners get, helping the system. We helped hundreds of homeowners in Chicago, homes for the very first time. And with I have to help them for the whole of Chicago, including car, car facility here in the Bronzeville area that gives financial help, training to residents. We work with financial treatment centers all over Chicago. I think October, with other ways of helping, we helped hundreds of homeowners build safety and have access to clean energy products in their own systems. And so we're doing a lot. We helped hundreds of businesses, small businesses, state businesses, doing a companion program, which brought $8.5 million into the Chicago market. So we're not new to our work here, but especially in the branch community. That's why we look around to current organizations that are on the ground that are doing the work in the areas that we support. And so I just want to be clear about this. We don't, we can't support all the things. There's so many great nonprofits doing very great work. We help communities, the kids, and all the types of things. We look like that, we can add value in the areas where we have expertise, which is housing access and affordability, small business growth, financial health, and sustainability. And the slide just here shows how we're looking at those areas. Housing access and affordability is not key for how, he, how many people have stable houses. That we work with organizations like we go to the gather at Tap for Humanity. And if not, it's a homeless shelter right here in Chicago. We actually had enough of the poverty of our Wells Fargo employees. I should have mentioned that we have 2,000 Wells Fargo employees in Illinois and 800 here in Chicago. And they volunteered 8,000 hours last year and now I'm from Chicago to the community. So it's just not really a lot of us running dollars around, which is massive. We try to do, we try to do real impact on the community by with folks like all of this. Dolls shining in the spotlight on where the lead is and the organization that we should be working with, which leads through relationships that we have with five communities. Development Corporation, we have a big red house being opened up this week at Bronsville. Talk about a little bit after I'm done. But I just wanted to point out these other areas that we're also in. And these other areas that we try to have a close impact. The way we do is we don't give to individuals, we don't give to individual businesses. We partner with folks that are doing the work already in the community to come in and say, how can we help? How can we support the work that you do with the expertise that we have? Whether that is dollars, volunteerism, providing, connecting folks with loans or home loans or home loans, getting them ready for homes, getting them ready to bring their small businesses to life, that's what we want to do. And we focus that energy along low to moderate income communities exclusively, working with 5000 free organizations. Well, I should say you can learn more about, we give, to and how we give on our website as well. Now, wellsfargo.com, you have, you have non-profit places where you can enter a grant interest form to tell us about your nonprofit of consideration.
So that really concludes our presentation. We talked a little bit about the project timeline. We do, we need to go through a zoning process. And if we receive support from a banking branch coming to Bronzeville, we expect that the zoning process will start sometime in the early fall. And that construction will start in 2025. So that's when we can start to first moving at the second party. And so that kind of completes our presentation. You can take questions.
I've been hearing a lot about services and shit, but you know, the loan class and how you better help people, particularly for homeownership and small business development. And I was wondering if you found a little bit more about the extension of loan to the, you and I are talking, what we talking about? Be more specific.
Okay. So we're currently working with several local nonprofits, field programs that will directly support small business growth and homeownership in Bronzeville and beyond. Like I mentioned, we have a big grant announcement, $100 million, $100 million. It's only $100,000. A $100,000 grant from Community Development Corporation that announces right. And that's directed to support all of their programming, which is what Ron is about. That's, that's one of our initiatives that we're announcing soon. We recently announced a couple of weeks ago, a program that was supporting the neighborhood housing services in this new Chicago flat program. We gave them $500,000 for the program that is aimed at conserving our two important flat property stock that is being lost in our communities to developers or just disappear. And so that program helps to revitalize those properties, helps people buy them and purchase them, gives them the trainings of how to get ready to purchase them, to run them and rehab them. So that's something else we're pretty, we're very proud of. We also have some other programs that we're working on to put problems solving grants directly into the hands of small business owners and that will be coming out this fall. We are launching another program. We're hoping, so we're supporting the lead construction program with the local additional support corporation, which is List. And that, they're building an asset building program that elevates the work that we already been supporting at the Financial Opportunity Centers. So now that you have savings, now that you have a bank account, now that you, how can you get to that next level? How can you build that to an original one? So a lot of these things are still in the process of being built. But we're also continuing to support the programs that we've already been supporting in the communities, like Junior Junior, like Hattap Humanity, that we're working together. And all of those across elevate energy that goes in and helps bring clean energy into folks' homes in low-income neighborhoods. Last year, we invested $27 million in Chicago. And so we're looking to continue to build new relationships here.
Good evening. Thank you, Auburn Dow. Auburn Dow asked me to come and speak on a half of Parkings Valley Corporation. And we are pleased to announce and just very grateful to be a recipient of a grant this year from Wells Fargo to support all of our programming. We started a conversation with Wells Fargo, I think, about mid-year 2022. And appreciated that they came in, unlike any of the other had done to be honest at that point. They came up in introduction and had a conversation. And we had a conversation about what they are currently doing, many of the things that Trina has mentioned, what types of programs we were doing, where we saw gaps, where we saw synergies. And about a year later, we came back together and they offered us a grant, which, as she said, we will formally announce on Friday. And the funding, the funding will support all of our opportunities. But most importantly, we just finished a five, excuse me, a five-part financial series, financial management series. And through the funding from Wells, we were able to increase the attendance, as well as offering the businesses, business owners who completed all five parts a stipend and those who completed four of the five, we've got a smaller stipend. They're not much dollar amounts, but for individual business owners who are trying to find ways to work in continued education into their schedules and their time, those small stipends really matter. And as most of you know, QCDC knows that a big part of the work we do is small business development, whether it is very hyper, local, high-touch, one-on-one businesses, business development work, or it's a classroom style. Additionally, through, we're using one-fourth of our grant. And Wells is the presenting sponsor, presenting sponsor for Bronzeville Summer Nights 2024, which launches on Friday. And I know we'll see everybody here out at Bronzeville Summer Nights. There's some information in the back. The remaining portion of the, three-fourths of that grant will support the rest of our work. We've got for the second year, and it will be a larger class. We've got a boot camp for trademark and, trademark and, trademark and, excuse me, trademark attached in our space that will be in a toll work with the feds. So that if you are a business owner that are trying to do that work, you can get the information on your own without having to retain legal counsel. These are really expensive classes, so they have this kind of continued support. It is incredibly important. As Trina's mentioned, they have other partners. And something that they've also done that has been unique is to talk to their other grant partners and bring us to a table to figure out how we work together. So we've had meetings with NHS, we've had meetings with a couple of their other grantees. We're working on some products.
um, working on some, um, product for small businesses, um, with one of the other grant partners, and finding ways that we can work with, and provide services, um, through those avenues as well. So we're excited, we will continue to push like we push in the other financial institutions. Um, those that don't even know I have a banking background, and so we know the language, we know how to push it. We are looking to continue to have a, a really high-level customer service and engagement at this grant. So when we tell our business owners and our clients that you need a banker, and the banker can't tell her, we expect there to be a banker in the vendor. Uh, so we will be holding them accountable, and looking forward to continuing our relationship with Wells on this particular opening challenge.
And also, um, I see Phil, Mr. Warfield, and, uh, Ms. Jones. I'm looking at you, but I got you to not come back. Phil?
First, congratulations, for whatever you mean.
Yeah.
The second, I applaud Wells Fargo for putting that, that one back in the product category. Uh, often now, we mention business owners, typically black, uh, black businesses go with banks, and they're shoved off to the nonprofits that you give money to, and then those nonprofits charge the businesses a higher rate, so it's typically a currency exchange for small and black businesses. When we expect to give a book here to get the loans, but you have so many different, different policies in a grant that don't feel qualified for small businesses to get both directly. Uh, so I think that's one of the things that often now was asking people, which you didn't answer, uh, what products do you have to go to a Bronfield one, to a Simplicity, to a Beaches that wants to expand and, and, and afford their businesses just once again? All you mentioned were all low-down profit, CF and CDF, but then typically will charge pre-corporation higher rates than will the brokerage you do. So if that's anything, why don't you just give the money to them and not do?
That's, that's not a question for me, I'm another banker. I could turn it on, so that's all I can do, uh, but I know I'm.
I know that you feel so, really, when it starts, uh, I've been a banker twenty-five years, and I, and I hate you, and I hate you out there, right? Uh, but, you know, you have to be responsible, right? And responsible, and you know how this works, uh, you know, the key to this is educating and helping people get to the point where they can, right? You know, getting to great rates. And again, that's what the services and vice and guidance were coming from us, is what's going to happen, right? Uh, and I've been able to, you know, lend to everyone that you can talk about, and, and just hand out checks to everyone, right? If I think it was my money, I would, right, but it's, you know, it doesn't work that way, right? But I promise you, as the district manager, I will do my part to make sure that we do educate and help and counsel and get them to the point where they can get fair, you know, fair rates, um, when they borrow, right? And we also have open side as well, that's also going to help with that, because they specialize in credit, um, you know, credit repair, and also blood, right? Which is also a huge part of helping not just small business owners, but, you know, everyone personally, right? This community, so, uh, I will take that back and understand more about what we are, I want to do, because there are other resources that Wells Fargo is bringing to this community for small businesses, uh, and wrapping that up ahead of right now for the company, and I will get back to, uh, to this community and offer you down the information.
Would you be willing to commit tonight to having a roundtable with some of the small business stakeholders here, and maybe to give that conversation? I'm gonna be, I can be there to set that table, if you're interested to be a part of that table, just, um, ask them, or just, uh, if you need to ask them, we'll start at these halfs of conversations. Bring all the experts you want, you love experts. Uh, Mr. Warfield?
Yeah, mine is just a little bit, I'm just wanting to get a pair of cases, and Wells Fargo comes in at one.
As you know, Wells Fargo.
Wells Fargo will be Brownsville's property, so they're under, uh, two, uh, businesses in Brownsville.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Yes, you mentioned, um, environmental factor issue that needs to be addressed. Uh, I'd like to, I know there's been soil testing there the past twenty years now. I live in one of the three gray stones, go out to set, uh, behind that property. I'd like to know what it is and how it will be addressed.
Would you say anything?
My name is Chad Hayes, and I'm the construction manager for all of the Chicago landwork. Um, it's, the, the, the environmental piece of that is non-fiable, so if there's no, there's those issues that sits now, it's going to start digging. And typically what it is, is during the Chicago fires, a lot of the older materials were buried, and so what we do is we find some, it's been seen, and I don't know, I don't want to bore you with all the, but what will happen is...
No, please, more, please, I'm gonna do it.
The initial investment, it's a cleanness phase, I was thinking about a hundred, twenty-five thousand dollars, right out of that. Um, so we will be, we will be re-meating the soil, we have, and the soils that were left uncovered, we have to go down three feet and remove that soil. So we will be doing that, but as it sits now, there's no, you know, the kids can play there, and obviously it's, 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 uh, it's chain link dogs playing on there, but yeah, but as it sits now, there's no fire protection.
But once you start digging, there could be, is that what you're saying? Once you start digging down into the front?
She says, once you, once you start, there's nothing there now, but once you start digging, there are, are soil that you have to remove, sign?
The impact if the three people, families?
Uh, that, that will be done in about a week. Um, the soil will be removed, it's removed by, we, we have a special, um, re-meating team that does that. They have to, they have to sign it with the state government and federal government, and it's taken to specific, uh, to, to specific, uh, disposal locations that take care of it. And so it's, it's all done, or it's all done by, by state and federal regulations, so.
Uh, I see your man, and your answer, and the woman in the back, and this gentleman here, and TJ, and the lady in the back, and then we're gonna have to keep going, yes, ma'am?
How do you know what the project is, you're part of, uh, this private, particularly, actually, you're a bunch of?
Uh, we have, we have two that are diverse already that will be bidding on this location. Uh, we do, we do have, uh, we do have, yeah, contracts with Wells Fargo. Uh, we have Helios and Nacios. Helios?
Helios.
Construction and Nacio.
Are they acting very much?
Um, one, I don't know, they, they are, and they're registered for, um, diverse vendors. Not sure exactly who the owners are, uh, we don't.
Are you open to adding?
Yeah, we're open to adding, adding contractors. Yep, they have to be, they have to be vetted, and they have to, um, they have to have insurance to many dollars, and they have to, um, meet our, meet our, meet our qualifications. But yeah, we're open to any, if you want to send information to, to, uh, to, uh, to her now, um, and she can get that to me, that might be worth it.
All right, guys, I'll be sending stuff about our negotiations, um, and for consideration to the contractor, so before they, they can help me allow these companies to bid in.
All right, just want to say it's, uh, it's a God sent that you guys are here, and some of the troubles that you've got in, not you guys, but the corporate office, has made you start your little Chicago and Bronsville, and open up, uh, the brains. But my concern also is that for businessmen, are you really looking at doing, helping the businessmen, and helping this community develop businessmen that can put money back in this community and build their work, their network to help this community? One of the things that happens with many of the larger banks, you have people in your credit department, because the credit department is taking the decisions on the loans, who have no sense particularly to the community. What are you guys gonna do about that?
I think that was the commitment that I made to have, set a table, where we can start digging into that and having a discussion. They're not gonna get started until the twenty-first quarter of twenty-twenty-five. It moves us down to start those discussions. Before we start them, um, they do have, like, there's a small business navigation program, but there's other things that they could be doing, and we need to have a conversation about that. Please sign off, Allison. Uh, anybody else? Oh, sir, yes. Are you guys getting the same question to you that she asked?
I have, I have.
This is a fire-waisted project, they're not required, they don't, they're not required to follow the city's twenty-five line, but they do have a commitment to immunity and dignity.
It's wonderful. Good evening to you all, thank you all so much, and Trina, thank you so much, and Robert, we, it's amazing, I have you as a asset. And so I've been a ten-year customer, ten-plus-year customer, Wells Fargo, and as a senior person, I'm excited that you all are here, just personally, and the work that you all have, and I have the opportunity to tell you about three things that I would sort of just offer up to you all, if I have questions you need to take away, it's not necessarily to address here right now. Number one, which is extremely important, especially if we're dealing with black, majority-black communities, I know it's a fundamental thing, and getting inside of the work that you all have come in and do, and that's crucial, right? You wanna see that language of, this is what we're gonna do, and it doesn't have a profit, right? You wanna invest in the community in that way. But then there's the size of the business where it needs to generate profit in order to be sustainable, right? The business model that's being there, with that language is being the, I hope you all have that understanding that we're gonna be putting deposits into what's our, so in terms of the money that's there, those deposits are gonna fund the work, at least where it should, it shouldn't just be giving, coming from the corporate end, it should be the deposits that the community is gonna place into the bank. Like, let that be known, that the deposits will be the sustainable end of the work that you're gonna be with the lending and the, the business community. I think sometimes men totally miss the mark when they come into majority-black communities around. It being known that you don't necessarily have to get out anything, like, it's our money that's funding that work, it's our money that's funding those loans. That language needs to be lifted various, just number two, competitive forces that are, things doing amazing work, Capital One, their cafe law, that's something that should be in more black communities, right? Spaces where we feel comfortable and free coming in to just be, you don't necessarily have to spend money, you don't necessarily have to be a customer of Wells Fargo, to feel like we can be engaged with it. And so I think that may be happening in terms of that unity session, they all are incorporated into the property, but I would really double down and see what more can be done, and so that's fine, sort of party questions, like, what more can you learn to engage the community in a way that's high-diversity? And even those who aren't Wells Fargo customers today, through that customer experience that I have, to come in, they might want to come, who are Wells Fargo customers, to be interested. And the third piece is that homeownership piece. Homeownership is the number one route to really loving, and, and, you know, because you all know this, we do the partnership of Operation Hope, that's the message that the CEO of Operation Hope teaches. Black communities deserve access to home, board, property within their communities, it's, it's a, it's a point that we can, so whatever you all can do to host with that, and make sure that happens, that's what we would love to see.
Sir, if you please join this vote, we have to take. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Perez, can this be our?
So my question, what other we're touched on here, homeownership. So currently, Wells Fargo is no stranger to controversy, they're not trying to walk the lawsuit right now for discrimination, or we have one of the black, uh, applications, homeownership, which are down. So seeing that this is majority-black community, what, you know, I think I've given any thoughts on maybe talking to the community and trying to walk some of this fear?